To the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, we got everybody here tonight, but Naomi, Sarah's coming in through the teams tonight. Okay, on the regular agenda, I've got an addition, we'll put it between 23 and 24, we're gonna discuss that Attorney General's punt back to us for the election law. So, we'll put that as 23 and a half, or whatever you want to put it there. Brent, was there anything else that we were gonna change?
As right now, no. Just a heads up, your number 19, and we're supposed to get some numbers back at 6 o'clock, we'll see if this equals numbers.
Okay, I'll just put it.
We'll see after we get closer.
Yep, I'll just put a mark by it there. Okay. All right, anything else, otherwise, I'll look for a motion to accept that with the additions.
The motion.
Second.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda, any last minute from there? Didn't think so. You guys have any questions?
No, sir.
Sarah, do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
Not at this time, no, thank you.
Okay, then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jeff makes the motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Anybody see anything with the minutes?
No, motion to approve minutes.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second on the minutes?
I'll second.
I'll go ahead and second.
Oh, there you go.
Sarah, you're in.
Yeah, just beat me.
You're in, Sarah. All right, so Chelsea made a motion, Sarah does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, all right, public comment, anybody got anything you want to chat about tonight? Yep, go ahead, Martin, stand up and introduce yourself.
Martin Polhalter, resident, just wondering if the council saw the paper on Saturday, the article in there actually entitled Fargo's two-year property tax break, her new home should end, consultants. And, I won't read the whole thing, but the important part, paid consultant, this isn't just Martin Polhalter, resident, he's saying, from our standpoint, this benefit is marginal compared to the overall cost of home ownership, so it's really not playing an important element if they should live in Fargo or another neighboring community, all while producing revenues for the city. That's been my argument all along. I mean, I've heard that houses are gonna sell anyway, regardless of their session, regardless of interest rates, regardless of whatever, so why are we incentivizing this? Paid consultants is saying this, I'm not sure Mahoney was in here later on, saying something like, well, if we don't do it, it's gonna be more attractive to move to Horace or West Fargo than it is to Fargo. It's the same argument we heard in here, but paid consultant says otherwise. So, but maybe we do need it, I mean, are we sitting on too much lot inventory? I don't know. I propose we use the lots platted, number of lots platted versus building permits method as a way to quantify this, I don't really think it has to be complicated. I think we need to get a handle on that, one of those things being to maybe we don't plaid another development until the first ones, you know, 60%. Those are the points I wanted to make, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got things to bring up tonight? Okay, then we'll move along, sheriff's update this evening.
Hi.
Hello.
Don't really have much, call volume was up, but that happens whenever the weather gets nicer, more people out, more stops, all that. Didn't see any of the residential burglary stuff that we saw, like in the colder months, so that hopefully that goes away, that'd be nice. And then we do have, for the sheriff's update, there's a big presence on our social media with the new payback units, Coda and Glenn are actually gonna be going down to DuBoing this month to do their month-long training to get acclimated to each other, and that's gonna be a, I don't think he's a marijuana dog, he is a like meth, cocaine pill, that type of dog, and then he's also apprehension, so that's the good purpose, I don't think they're training dogs on marijuana anymore. Yeah, other than that, I don't know if they have anything else.
Yeah, I just noticed that the cases had gone up a little bit too, but I did kind of attribute that, it's like every spring we run into the same thing, so unless you saw something different, but.
No, forgive me if I look a little weird, it's my first day shift in two years out of patrol, so this, all this sunlight's been messing with it.
Yep, gotta get your eyes adjusted a little bit, right? Be careful about getting a sunburn and all that, you know, yeah. Okay, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paulson, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Joel Paulson, the executive director of that found diversion authority, we just wanna spend some time tonight, well, thank you for your time, we just wanna spend some time providing a brief update and then answering any questions. You know, as we've been moving forward, you know, we encounter a lot of folks that, you know, have questions and we wanna get out as much as we can, interact with the political subdivisions that are adjacent and impacted by the project, and I think this will become more important as construction starts on the channel, which is anticipated to begin this summer. And I did bring Chris Bockyard, our director of engineering as well, so he'll talk about a few of the project components that will start construction this summer that are nearby Horace, and then we'll talk a little bit about areas where people can access information about potential road closures and all sorts of things, just during construction. But, I just wanted to start out, giving a brief update, we did close the P3 deal, which is the contract for the diversion channels, the entire diversion channel, the 18 bridges in the two aqueduct structures, we closed on that bid last fall, and we're now working with that contracting group to go through all of their preliminary plans, construction staging, those sorts of things, and working with their quality management plan, they are anticipated to start channel construction late this year, but they are also gonna be doing utility relocates, there's gonna be some activity, it's not gonna be the full-scale construction that we'll see next summer, but they'll kick off and begin some activities this year. And Chris will confirm, but most of those activities are on the north end of the project, up by Georgetown on the Minnesota side, and then they'll be working their way with the channel construction down south and ultimately connect with the diversion inlet structure. The core engineers will basically get close to completion on the inlet construction this summer, the gates were just delivered here, and those are being installed, the wild rice control structure is not close behind, that will continue as well, and then we will be starting construction on the divert, or the Red River Control Structure, which is off Highway 81, right next to the Red River, and that is the largest single component of the Horace portion of construction, and that was bid out and awarded to Ames Construction, who's the same contractor that's been building the diversion inlet and the wild rice structure. So we're pretty happy about that, Ames has been extremely professional, been very attentive to safety and schedule and budget on the previous two control structures that have been going forward, so we're happy to have them on the Red River. So, I don't think you'll see much different activity in Horace, other than maybe some survey truffs and those sorts of things that might be out in the areas adjacent to Horace, but you won't, you know, we won't be looking at that full-scale construction until next summer, and it'll take them some time to get down south here. They may start, we got a pretty robust schedule, but they may start on some county bridges and those sorts of things before they actually get to this location with the channel construction, so there may be some of those activities. Once we have those confirmed though, of course, we'll coordinate with Brent and the city and ensure that the council's aware of those bridge construction projects and how those are moving. But, all in all, you know, we have procured all of the land necessary for the diversion channel, we're about halfway through all of the land necessary for the southern embankment, we continue to work diligently, happy to report, out of 730 parcels acquired to date, we've only had to take eminent domain action on 30 of those parcels, and we've actually reduced some of those through negotiations after eminent domain, so we're now down to about 24 actual work cases. So, we're doing our best to try to find compromise with landowners, I think the city can recognize some of the difficulties are really located next to the urban areas, where you have the development potential of the land, and how do you appraise that, and how do you compensate the landowner, that's really what a majority of eminent domain cases are focused on. So, we'll continue to work through those, obviously it's a process, but, and then on the permitting side, all of the overarching permits are in place, we still need to work through some conditional permits as we move forward, that's just part of the process, it's routine, but we don't see any major hiccups or issues associated with that. So overall, construction of the completed project is scheduled for 2027, and so you will start to see some components come online with the core projects over the course of the next few years with the southern embankment, and then we'll see that channel construction start to move from north down south here. I know there was a question, and there's been some community dialogue around workforce camps that might be located within the right-of-way, we have confirmed with the Red River Valley Alliance, who's the contractor responsible, that there are no such plans to have workforce camps, they do anticipate their entire workforce being contained within housing that's already located here in the urban community. So, I know there was some consternation, but I just wanted to make sure the council understood that we took that and we worked with them and we confirm that we're not being workforce housing. So Chris, I don't know if you wanna talk anymore about specific schedules related to Horace, maybe introduce yourself.
Yeah, sure. As Joel said, my name's Chris Bockyard, I'm the director of engineering for the authority, probably just a couple of things to add a little color to Joel's comments, that was a good overall summary. Cora has two other smaller projects that they are starting this summer, the first, the second segment of embankment from the inlet structure up to Drain 27, they will be bidding that here in the next couple of weeks, that's planned to start at some point this summer, I don't have schedules yet, since that hasn't been officially bid or awarded, they also are the same process of bidding, what's called a wetline mitigation project, the long Drain 27, so in between County Road 16 and County Road 14, they'll be building a wetline complex in there, they're also in the process of getting that project kicked off and running, so we anticipate that we'll start that this summer. Compared to the inlet structure, or the wild race, or the red structure, those are relatively small projects, similar to what you probably saw in the construction of SE1, the embankment piece itself in the last year, that project should wrap up this spring, they just have a little bit of earthwork left, and then they'll be doing some seeding and vegetation work. We're anticipating, as Joel mentioned, that project will likely come online for us to pick up the maintenance of sometime this fall, or at the latest, next spring, summer. So those are probably the two other, maybe a little bit more detail. I think, you know, as far as construction of the channel, I think Joel's summary was very good, unless you guys have questions, you know, we anticipate there'll be some construction activities all along the channel by next year, not so much this year, I think this year you'll see the construction just up on the north end, probably between I-29 and Yolanda, generally speaking, this year is probably as far, maybe a little bit past the I-29 area on a bridge work. But I do anticipate by next summer and the next fall, there'll likely be some level of activity all along the channel, and like Joel said, a lot of the stuff done in this area, we're anticipating we'll be bridging bypasses and getting utility work, getting prepped up for the main channel construction to come through in the subsequent years, so, again, as that all kicks off this summer, we can certainly give you guys periodic updates, but let them know once they get their cadence going as far as how the progress is working. Those are probably the only other two items, if you guys have any questions, I did leave the maps in front, that gives you kinda where the components are, if there's any questions, we can certainly help try to answer those.
Do have a question, Brian. So you said they're starting up on the north end, as far as the actual diversion goes, but on the south end here, you're doing the Red River Control Structure, Wild Race Control Structure, do you anticipate those are gonna be done ahead of time and bring water to the actual control structure south of Horace here before we have a completed diversion on the north side?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, there will be no ability for us to control that for a few reasons, one, you can't route water towards the inlet structure until we have all the embankment in place, so there will be sections of the embankment that will be purposely left open until we get closer to having that operational state. For instance, as Joel said, the first control structure that'll come online, if you will, to be able to be operated will be the inlet structure, we're not able to operate that until we have our full program implemented, and that's in the core, the core has a water control manual that they've indicated that they're not gonna operate that structure until we have the completion of binding place, which means we have all the components completed.
And if I could add just a little bit more, because I think the concern is, how would you deal with flooding, you know, interim during construction? And so I just wanna point out a couple of things, that the inlet gates will remain closed at all times unless we actually operate the project, and so the operation of this project is only anticipated for massive flood events, such as we saw at 2009 in Grader, so very, very rarely would those gates ever operate, only during those flood events, otherwise they'll be closed, and the southern embankment will provide all of that continuous protection for the state of Horace. Another thing to consider, as well as the Cheyenne Aqueduct that will go over the diversion channel, prior to coming over into the Cheyenne diversion in the Cheyenne River in town here, that aqueduct is sized such that it could never provide more than a certain amount of floodwater across it, everything else spills over into the diversion channel. So in essence, it's acting as a bottom that flows into the Cheyenne diversion and then the Cheyenne Main River, and providing a higher level of protection of what the diversion, the Cheyenne project currently offers for Horace and parts of south west part. I'll just point out that in closing, we do have some operational videos on our website, they've been very well received, we put it together so that folks could kinda see how the, how and when the project operates and how we control those gates. We're getting a lot of great feedback, there's just a lot of misinformation about how the project operates, how it stores water, and how long it stores water, and so the video's a great way to see that explanation and kinda step through a flood event and see when certain gates would open, and what the level would be in the upstream mitigation area, what the levels would be in the Red River, and then what the levels would be in the diversion channel, so I would just advise, maybe take a peek at that. We have a couple of other ones that we've just released too, on funding and financing, and I won't get much into that tonight, the council maybe knows, but we are fully funded at this point, and so we are, we're ready to go, we're all hands on deck for construction.
So Joel, let me ask you, just for a point for everybody here, when would we anticipate being more involved in this as far as the construction process, so we're talking like '25, '26, '27, and that, those timeframes, that there'll be more activity down in the south part, or is it just gonna be a gradual build, or, I just tried to get an idea when we're gonna have more of the construction on this end of the?
Yeah, I'd say probably more so in '25 and '26 will probably be the busiest years, you might, again, it'll probably ramp up as you get, next year will be probably just advanced work following year, might be a bit more, it'll probably gradually build up, but I, the way I'm seeing the schedule, '25 and '26 will probably be.
And that's fair, I know it's a little.
Down here, for a variety of reasons, dropping up all of the core elements at that point and the project and the.
Yeah.
Will be kinda tied.
I didn't wanna make assumptions, that's why I thought I'd ask, but I just, being you guys are starting in the north, I just assumed we'll be getting involved in this toward the end of the project, not obviously at the beginning.
Mine is the core work. That'll be ramping up to this area as a couple of years, and then kind of their wrap-up will be from the Red River structure back towards the Wild Race, and it'll be the last couple of weeks to finish on the, so they'll be through this year, next year, probably the following year, probably heavy stack activities. Everything from the inlet further to the east, but there'll be some activities.
Perfect. It's more for like just planning purposes, so we're kinda with you guys when it's gonna, when we can start feeling we're gonna get involved in this, just planning, okay?
Do you have like a construction crew size, like how many people would be working in this area?
Yeah, we've seen projections at the peak of their workforce, so when they're building all the bridges and all the channels, the channels being excavated, you'll have somewhere around 800 people working on the channel side of things, I don't think we've ever seen real accurate numbers from the core yet on theirs, but typically they have, they're smaller components, you know, like Ames, I don't know what they have for crew size up there right now.
Yeah, theirs are in the 15, 20, 30.
Fairly small.
Peaks by a little bit, but it's much smaller than. And, of course, we'll be doing theirs in segments, so, as I said, SE1 will be wrapping up this year, and SE2 will be starting, if you know, piece from meal, and so theirs will be a little bit more piecemeal, they should have the inlet structure completed this time this year, I'm anticipating they'll be pretty much done with that and just finishing up vegetation and some final cleanup, so, again, as their, one parts of their program ramp up, the other one's ramping down versus the channel work will continue to ramp up and probably peak in the 5 range and then start tailing downs.
We do anticipate them to be working 24/7, 365 days a year on the excavation of the channel, and so we did have provisions within the contract that require them to suppress noise around, you know, residential structures that are near the channel, and I think there were some other things related to lighting and just actions that they can do, and I think there is some limited work hours in some certain locations that we have, but we went through and we studied and we looked at, any structures within a mile of the channel, you know, would have noise reduction areas that would be implemented in hours of operation. Obviously, we're expecting some level of complaints as we move through, I don't think there's ever been a construction project where you don't get some kind of complaint, and so, the Red River Valley Alliance is required to field those complaints and work with us to ensure that they're resolved adequately, but of course, you know, telling the city this, if you receive any complaints, send them our way and we'll deal with them, figure out how we can deal with the situation if they did work around this.
Anything else, Sarah, do you have any questions?
No, that was quite thorough, thank you.
Okay, thanks guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Brent and Lucas, who wants to do the next one?
I can introduce it. Sally, can you bring up that application over the last five of that application? Sarah, we click, if you click, click on that link, that'll bring you up to the variance application, and the very last slide there for you, Sarah, is the one you'll probably want to see that shows you an image of, or shows you a graphic of what we're talking about. I have some internet challenges here today. So the, so I'm making sure it's up here on screen for you to see it. There, if you go to the last screen, your last slide there, Sally, of the, yeah. So what you have before is a variance application for two properties, 7884 Cottonwood Boulevard and 7880 Cottonwood Boulevard, it's a joint application from Thompson Homes and ISR Homes, we have a situation here where the house has been built by ISR Homes encroached into the lot, the house being built by Thompson Homes, that graphic there on the last slide will show you what our building inspectors have drawn up of what, and shows what's going on in this area. The variance is in regards to request a variance for a setback, setback would put one property, right now there's a five-foot setback, it put one property at just over four foot of a setback, with the other property being about three foot, 10 inches, three and a half feet. I know you're scrolling to it, still sliding behind. In order for this to potentially work, there would also have to be a boundary line adjustment, so a boundary line adjustment can change where the property line exists between the two properties, we would not approve at a staff level of boundary line adjustment without a variance in place, so, this would have to be approved in order for our boundary line adjustment to go through, and that difference I was telling you about, the roughly three and a half feet and then the four feet, that's based on if there's that boundary line adjustment to occur. This was presented to the planning commission last month, I believe it was 3/8?
Yep.
On the 8th, and planning commission recommended denial of the application, their main concern at the time, the reason for denial was precedence, that what precedence this would set, if you ever have these happen again. Also, like I said, this, the back property, this house actually encroached all the way into the, or into the Thompson Homes lot, not just the setback, so it's created a tight area there. Russell, does it anything to determine what you recall in planning commission?
No, but. Here's the sta, here's the standards from the current ordinance, no application for variance to be approved unless the city council finds that all of the following are present. A, that special, that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the premises, and which are not applicable to other premises in the same zone district. B, the literal interpretation of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zone district. Here's the biggie, that the special conditions and circumstances have not resulted from actions of the applicant, that granting the variance request will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by the ordinance to other premises. Second, for planning and zoning, our concern is precedent. This will come back and bite us.
Well, right.
For city council, the ordinance says, the conditions and circumstances cannot be, because they was, as a result of what the applicant did.
Right.
It's weren't pre-existing conditions.
Right, well, that's the thing, we've talked about what constitutes the hardship clause, that's what that whole thing, when we went through this exercise, what, three, four years ago, and we're deciding how we're gonna do these variances, came across that, you know, okay, so what constitutes that? Yeah, I'm not seeing that here, this is self-induced.
We are really sad about this.
Oh, this stinks.
It stinks, but. You don't want to, we really don't, we really don't believe that you want to set this precedent.
No, and I understand, again, this has been discussed in the priors, and so, I know, you're.
I'm very myrea, with our company, Realtors, and representing the real, they are the ones building the home in 7880 Cottonwood, and if I can, I'd like to speak to you.
Go ahead. Okay, I'll open a public hearing, then let's go ahead and we'll start.
I didn't realize how many of you there are, but here is a copy of my notes, and these are copies of the subject house, and the neighborhood houses, and other finished ISR homes, just so you can see what that looks like. So, I'll give you a little bit of a timeline here, so in January 2021, the roads contracted with ISR Homes for the construction of their new home, we had an expected closing date of September 1st, 2021. In August, the roads. Uh in August, uh the roads uh enrolled their daughter in the Horace Elementary School, and they've been driving to the Horace for school ever since. In September, September fifteenth, to be exact, the roads on the sale of their existing home. And they rented it back for one month, anticipating the completion and construction of their new house. In October, the roads moved into an apartment and rented storage for most of their belongings. November, ISR Homes became the subject of an assignment for benefit of predators due to the Horace divorce proceedings, which caused delays leading up to and after uh the order being in effect. In December, we had notice of a cease and desist order that was issued by the construction due to the lot line issue in the foundation. Foundation contractor apparently measured off the wrong pins. Yet the construction of the home continued for some period of time before this was passed. ISR Homes spoke with the city representatives who felt it could be handled and signed off by the city attorney. As the builder and the buyer on the adjoining lot agreed, this collection of portions was not necessary to correct the whole after several calls and weeks, it was then noted that the process needed to go through the proper city channels. Um so this was a further delay. So now here we are, April twenty twenty-two, six months after the roads moved into apartment and thirteen months after entering entering into a contract. Roads family, uh they do not have any certainty if I'm moving into their new home. The housing market has also changed since January of twenty twenty. Um I have enclosed pictures there of the subject property, of the neighborhood houses. You can also see how close the neighborhood houses are. And they are on the same side of the street. So the builder, Dan Carroll, his attorney at Thompson Homes, attended the planning and zoning meeting, all in favor of the variance. I understand concerns were raised about the two homes being too close together. I I think they're about ten feet apart. And about a precedence being set. However, most of the homes on that side of the street are very close together. I've sold real estate in the Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo area for thirty-seven years. I've never seen anything like this. Nothing has ever happened like this in my office. So I think the likelihood of a repeat is minimal. Roads family has incurred financial, emotional hardships, hardship due to the contractor mistake, and I believe it's solvable. Um I guess I'm just asking you not to punish your wonderful family and ask that you reconsider and improve the variance so that they can finally be part of the neighborhood. I also wanted to make a note that because of the ABC order, this house may sit in its current state for quite a while if your application to be tore down or demolished. And the likelihood of it being rebuilt are probably um the new homeowners are also here. I believe that Jayden or Samantha might like to speak.
Sure, go ahead.
Again, I don't have enough copies, but you it's um quite a bit of a repeat of what Carrie said, um but just kind of to attribute for itself the situation of our game and um I'm Samantha Rose, my husband is David Rose. We are um going to be building or trying to build that seventy-eight eighty Cottonwood Boulevard. Um we're very excited to become residents of the city of Forests. Um and specifically of the Lost River community. Um our daughter is currently in the Forest Elementary. She's in her first year there. Um it's a kindergartner. Our other daughter will be entering preschool hopefully in the next year as well, and we have more on the way. Um so we already feel like we're part of the forest community involving our children here because where we thought we would be as of September of last year. Um from the beginning of the building process, we've been faced with several delays. Um you know, from our our builder dealing with his own personal problems um to current day with this uh property line variance issue. Um we're we were originally scheduled to close our home September first of twenty twenty-one. Due to everything coming to its creating halt, um the issues of the property line in our home wasn't discovered until the framing inspection. Um and the stop order was then placed on the home on November tenth of twenty twenty. Um front inspections we had back in November with the building inspectors for the city of Forests. Uh they're very honest in the process moving forward. Um they advised that if paperwork was submitted and the law variance was agreed upon by all parties, um that they saw no reason really that this variance would not move forward. Uh there was still the possibility that the agreement, uh if the agreement did not come to fruition, uh that the home being torn down is still a possibility. Um Dan Carroll also stated that he spoke with the city attorney, was advised he saw no reason that this could not be signed off on. It did need to go through permissioning council. Um it's been agreed upon by Thompson Homes and the buyers, the buyers of seventy-eight eighty-four Cottonwood Boulevard, that our bill would be fine to move forward. Um and that they have been agreed to be compensated to the law on variance um as far as today, um and after everything has been agreed upon, uh we still face the possibility of the variance being denied and to begin again from square one. Um we were unable to attend the zoning meeting. Um but the zoning and commission meeting, uh but we heard that there were concerns that were addressed. Uh but driving through the city, uh we've noticed, as Carrie said, that there are multiple houses that appear as close, if not closer than ours, and some offset um for that desired ninety-degree angle of the road, um with a lot of them just being running in our neighborhood where we are building. Um with the current housing market, um the mortgage rate hike being its highest since two thousand eighteen. Um every day that we get pushed back is costing us thousands of dollars. Um if variance gets denied by the council after all of us already agreed, we'll be forced to wait another two or three months along, and so we're able to find another house or build again from the ground up. Um if any decision is based on personal bias towards the builder, I understand thousand percent. Um but please just remember that we are a growing family. Um we seem to have three children, and we simply just need a place for for us to plant our roots. Um we fell in love with the Horace community and the Lost River development itself. Um we can't see ourselves building anywhere else. Um and we're just really excited to officially become part of Forest, be Forest resident, and have a place to call home. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Lucas, what did you guys, when you took, uh were talked about this, the planning and zoning, what was your take on any of this?
Um so obviously, I I knew about all of this. I don't think I did much of any input at that.
Mm-hmm.
On this one. Um I do know that I talked to the developer today
Okay.
for this area, and the developer supports the city granting variance. Does not think that it has any effect on the development, and the developer still has oversight to building edicts and whatnot. So we wanted to relay that to the council. Uh as far as the council's decision on this, um after recommendation from Plank Commission, we have the ultimate authority to make a decision on granting variances based on the facts that are presented before you. Uh if you guys need additional information or pick up a site visit, I believe Plank Commission's site visit. Okay, all right.
I don't
That's something that's the council would certainly do. Um you know, in making a decision on this variance.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You you drove by there, Jeff?
I I got certainly a gravity of seventy-eight eighty-four, um just to see how close the front steps of seventy-eight eighty were. Um we talked about uh the other builder um asking for I believe it is a fence between the two properties, is that correct? And so we have I'm not sure what type of offense, whether it's offense between the two properties or supposed to be between the two properties. Uh Steve, I'm glad you stood up because I am going to ask you, from a fire marshal's perspective, please give me your opinion.
Um there are variances and allowances for tighter areas, but then you have to have a firewall exterior building that they're this close together. And that is a combination that can be made. The other piece is if this fence goes right along the property line, and I'm not sure where it was there, it may not be wide enough to meet entry exit to get onto that side of the house if we had to get into a fire suppression situation. So if there was a fence to be put in there, it could not be put up here in the front of the house. It would have to be put here in the back. I refer to the back to the back corner. So that if we had to get up to it, usually there was a typical ladder throw, we're moving from ladder. And so the two biggest, and then the other concern is that the siding on both houses should not be vinyl. You have vinyl on one side, just that heat can transmit and you start to vinyl on fire on the other side. So it's a combination of issues. One of both houses will have fire stop on their exterior walls. And then the second piece that they have a window on that side, it's also up there today.
Um was there siding on the house? I didn't, I can't remember if there was or not.
No, but there's vinyl siding on the ground.
Got it, okay.
And it was typical vinyl siding.
Yep.
Not the high resistance fire, just type of vinyl siding. That was item one. Item two then is that means the joyous B that's on that side will probably have to be taken down and put up with fire resistant line equipment.
That would be on both houses, though, correct? Thank you.
It was with the closeness of those two houses on that corner near the garage, edge of the house.
We're talking the width of the, one side of the fence was as wide as an eighty-eight door, is that correct? Three foot ten inches approximately?
Only was four seven, four seven on the left side and three three, ten and a half on the right.
It depends on where you measure where that line was, where the fence gets born.
Anything else, Jeff? Delsey? Questions?
What was the dimension of the houses from at an angle?
Sorry, me?
Anybody know? I guess. I mean, it looks like they're, it, we're getting the four seven and the three ten to the property line, but the houses are actually at a forty-five or whatever, like that closest point. Is that an angle?
Well, there was one we tried to thought that was up there for very miles. One house, imagine the front of the house being pulled towards the other house. You know, just in the front lots, the whole house is canteered to, rotated a bit to the other house. It's not that the house is evenly paired.
Yeah, except, I mean, the ten feet is the number for the fire rated, so if it's measured at a at an angle, if, you know, I don't know if we would get to the ten feet or not with that angle measurement. Um but it it does seem very wasteful to rip the house down. Um doesn't seem very productive.
You you have a corner, back corner of garage here, the front corner of the front door.
Yeah.
So the front doors, that back garage is in front.
Yeah.
One property here, one here.
Yeah, so there's kind of a
Don't have the exact distance.
Yeah, we're seeing the dimensions to the property.
We're we're mainly looking at the setbacks from the actual property line, if the boundary line adjustment occurred.
Yeah.
That would be what you're looking at. So we don't have spacing from actual
Can I speak for a moment on the on the property line adjustment? Where in the back of the corner of the garage and the front door and porch area, that's where the concern is. I understand the fence and you know, at at this point, is it a fence that's feasible to install? Or is that part of the or uh part of the covenants that on these two properties that there is no fence installed on these? As far as my research and working with Thompson Homes on the law adjustment, the the area that is that the fire suppression that would need need to be made is where the back of the garage and front of the property on seventy-eight eighty porch area, that's that's a concern. The rest of it on the two properties are greater than ten feet, but again, there are products, uh and it is fairly minimal expense compared to tearing the the property down. It's very minimal expense. Put this fire suppression, fireproofing on the outside two must be.
So the intended setback is five feet?
There is approximately ten feet between the two properties. It's just a, it's it's a small area that we incurred that based on the law adjustment.
Anything else?
Sarah.
Yep. Sarah, have you got any questions on this one?
I don't have any questions. No, I'm uh holding my tongue on comments at this point.
And why is that?
Yeah, you wouldn't have to do that, Sarah. If you got comments, go ahead and say them, because that's what we're doing right now.
All right, then I'm gonna go out there. I'm gonna tell you that I've been in contracting for twenty-eight years, and I've been not only on the industrial utility side, but also on the residential commercial side as an executive vice president. While I am sympathetic to what these homeowners, these future homeowners are going through, and I'm sympathetic to errors made on behalf of the builder. These people contracted this builder to do a professional job, right? They are paying good money, hard-earned money, and spending an awful lot of time jumping around due to no fault of their own, none whatsoever. And as a future homeowner in Horace, they do not need to accept something substandard, and quite frankly, neither do we. This is ridiculous, and under no circumstance can I, in good faith, as a contractor, go against the recommendation of our Planning and Zoning Commission, nor, in good faith, can I consider any type of variance of this magnitude based on the information that's been presented here. In a nutshell, that's my thoughts. I could go on and on, but I won't. I think I've made my stance very clear.
Yep, no.
So just looking at the solution, um are you saying you would not allow like any movement to the property line? Or, so I'm just wondering, like, you know, if we're trying to stay within the the ordinance, I mean, if they cut off a corner of the garage and angle it and move the property line, and then you have your five-foot setbacks. I mean, I guess that's
You're asking Thompson Homes then to cut off part of their house to, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm assuming they're having to obviously pay Thompson Homes to make this work, um so that property line is moving, so you know, I I don't know how much the property line is is able to move or they're willing to move it. Um
So I was out there uh a week and a half ago, whenever I called you. Okay. Um Thompson Homes was still working on a board basement, uh inside the basement. I'm not sure what actually there, there was no actual frame structure above the ground at that point. Was it ever asked Thompson Homes if they would be able to, you know, instead of tearing down an entire home, modify that foundation to move it over? I I guess I don't know. I I I would be talking out of line that it could not be for me to ask. But um I don't know what other options you guys have. Tried to figure out on how to resolve this issue, and it shouldn't be the homeowner themselves trying to figure this out.
With Thompson Homes, they are five foot from the property line, right? So they're making that sacrifice? Is that right?
Yes, based on, based on the agreement that Thompson Homes and I have come up with, that's that's
But that other, yeah, so the house on the right is Thompson Homes, and that one is
Oh, the other way, left one is Thompson, right one is
Okay.
This picture was taken on Friday. And the other pictures I gave you were taken on Saturday.
So they have started framing though?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is the Thompson home?
This one is.
Yes.
This is the Thompson home. This is the ISR home.
Okay.
I only have one of those pictures. Sarah, you can have it back then. You can, you can keep that.
Okay, so yeah, that, that whole home would have to be pulled out basically for it. Unless the, the property line jogged maybe. Right? Could you, I mean, Jim, could you, could the property line be jogged to make this work within our ordinances?
Thompson Homes has been.
But they moved the whole line. They kept it straight.
Yeah. Jog it, I think you'd still have to do the variances from what I can see on there, I think.
Corrected the variance but setbacks anyways, correct?
Yeah, the variance is for a setback.
Yeah, I mean.
The setback would be based on if you'd be willing, if the council's willing to bring a variance situation here, then the variance would be based on the boundary line just on so that black line that you see between the properties. The red line is existing, so we're not right now. So the variance after the boundary line. And to do a jog, you'd have to jog it between the houses at some point and then kick it out. Other, just over a foot. Over to that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like.
From the houses, the ISR house, it would just be pretty questionable how tight it is right between the houses on those floors.
Well, yeah, it seems like the Thompson home would have to, you know, angle that back corner of the garage. They'd have to rip that out and reframe it with an angle and then the property line would have to jog around it to get that, all the, the five foot to work. It's a shame to rip out a whole house. I don't know. That's, that's very. That just seems so wasteful. It kind of makes me sick, but.
I understand. It's just the.
It's the principle of it, um, but.
And the liability of it, I would add, because there's quite a bit there, no matter which way you look at it.
Right. That's the thing.
The fire, the fire portion of it.
That's what you mean there, Sarah, the fire portion of it? Or are you just talking in general?
I'm talking in general. I mean, you can look at it from the view of fire. You can look at it from the viewpoint of, of how planning and zoning look at it. Their recommendation for denial based on ordinances. You can look at it from a, a perspective of proximity. You can look at it on how it's going to set a precedent. I mean, my God, I can go on about ten different options here. It opens up doors that I don't really want to look down.
Doc, Russ, is that kind of where your group was talking too? When you guys had that open discussion about it? Beside, besides the, the list, I mean of. Yep.
I am unbelievably sympathetic to the position these people are in and I want to make it very clear that it is not their problem. None of this is their problem.
I mean. It obviously is, it's their life, I mean, right now, so they're having to deal with it. But I get the precedence thing, so, um, I'm not really at a position to like lead something against that. Um, I would, I would say, you know, jogging the property line and trying to reframe top, that Thompson garage at an angle is all I can think of that would make it work, but obviously that's not why I'm here, so.
Well, that's just, so we gotta talk about it a little bit. See, because I understand where Russ is coming from through it. This is the precedence thing because it's it's unfortunate because this, you don't expect this to happen, especially if you get this far along and have this come about. So. Jeff, any other comments on this?
Um. I understand what you're going through. I got a relative going through the same thing right now in Bismarck. Uh, they did not go over a property line, but they are too close to a setback and they had to modify their current home. To the term of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. I understand exactly what you're going through. I do agree this is a very dangerous precedent. I don't know if I'm willing to do that. I totally understand what you're going through though.
Yep, I just said, I think we can all sympathize with this, what's happening here.
So, something I have to add for you there is if you want us to evaluate the jog concept, we could look at that, that from the south side. If that is something the builder would be looking into. There's no guarantee it would work. Probably be looking at it on the side there, just checking to see, okay, where do they fall? But that is also, it's dependent on Thompson Homes being receptive to it and the builder and everybody considering through that. Uh, we're going off of the application, the information we have before.
Yeah.
And the other thing we have dealing with too is if we're talking fences, we're talking the covenants in Lost River as well.
In covenants, we do not enforce them.
If you're gonna explore that, they've already started framing this house as far as how fast they're moving on it. You're gonna have to ask them to stop to give us two more weeks, which I don't know if that builder would be willing to do that. They are moving very fast. Like I said, I was out there a week and a half and it was just the concrete foundation.
Yeah, we, we really don't have the grounds for a stop work on Thompson Homes. So when for an ISR one, when it came to our ability inspectors, they mentioned they had it in the situation, everything, that's what we needed to stop with. And then we have the various applications that have been issued.
If it's. If it's possible, I could speak with Thompson tonight and get working on that and see our options. I guess this would be forty eight hours. We could have something to tell them because Thompson and I do want a wingman situation, both, and we definitely don't want to see a house torn down. But I also want to get the boys in their home. So I, I would be hoping to exploring the possibility of working with Thompson. Maybe, like I said, they do have, want a wingman situation here. They don't see general contractors do work with each other. In this case, they want to see Stevens to get completed quickly.
I'm sorry, who's speaking right now?
Yeah, did you introduce yourself by the way?
Uh, Dan with ISR Homes.
Okay, Dan with ISR Homes. Can you, did you hear him, Sarah?
I could hear him.
Yeah, microphone is picking it up. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, I would say definitely go back and have a conversation and try to, if, I don't know what the, or the ordinance state about if, I mean, if there's any issue jogging the property line. But if the property line jogs and you get to five foot setback, with some modifications to the Thompson home. Sounds like that's where, I mean, it doesn't sound like we're gonna be able to give up air lines, but. By the way, the conversation is going.
So look at what is needed here.
It sounds like the council is not gonna make a decision tonight, so you have to table. Your decision until, give direction on that table till next meeting, they want to go, give a solution.
Does it have to wait two weeks or do we have to have to special?
You have a special meeting.
You have a special meeting if we're gonna do it.
So if it is at five feet, if there, there was a jog and it could be where both properties are five feet away from that, it'd be very, very tight. But if there was, then they wouldn't need a variance. Very difficult to issue a variance. If there's still an issue.
And I was just gonna ask, have we measured to see if that's even a feasible option?
That's what I was just saying. We'd have to go out and measure it all to see if it's even this long. Because we don't know the distance from the two corners, the corner of the front of the house there, where the house begins, the entry for porch and the corner of that garage.
Can the cantilevers, can you cantilever over a setback or is it for this point, like overhangs and everything?
You, you can. You can build a porch window well.
So it would measure to their door, not their overhang, as long as they don't put a column on there or something? So if they, if they leave it without a column and we get ten feet where it sits, then, and we can jog the property line, then, you know, you could maybe get it to work.
Okay, Steve, you had a comment?
If we look at the potential of jogging the property line, does that have to go back through planning and zoning?
We have boundary line adjustment that typically approved by, what the city ordinance says, boundary line adjustment approved by the administration.
So Jase, what do you have?
Make that decision.
Yeah. Steve, you had a comment?
Um, the only other, besides making sure that the distances are appropriate. However, we jog and I'm separating the property lines, meaning that the houses were saying this, that distance is still there in regards to how we jog the line. So we go back out there and we measure. Make sure that we're not gonna be spreading fire to include the extension of the heat.
Well, then we have to do that on every house.
But the houses in the other area, look, they had to set back the distance. You do have that sort of three feet or three and a half feet. You had a eighteen inch heat.
Well, yeah, the houses is, yeah.
The property, so we would have to go based on the second or the fall issues.
It should fall under all the, you know, all the codes as they sit if it is, if the foundations are ten feet.
That's what I'm getting.
Yeah.
But the other piece that I'm very concerned about is where does the fence get put if a fence will be put between the two houses?
If the property line is changed to make sure they have this five foot setback, then it should be no different than any other location where they put the fence.
The one that's set, that sets track to.
Yeah, I mean, if they jog the, the, the property line, then they're falling in all the correct ordinances. I mean, it sounds like.
If they would jog the property line, the property line would have to be jogged to a fashion where they would still have to be five feet from. They, they would have to be a five foot setback. Unless a variance was granted to them, so. But that's where we'd be looking at is can a jog be accomplished? Still have five foot. I don't know for sure.
All right, so let's do this then. Let's, let's table this thing, much as I don't want to, but I do want to give all the options here. Let's go measure it, see what we got. If that's an option, great. If it's not, then we'll have to make the decision. Okay? I'll close the public hearing then, Lucas, so you can get that marked down. So let's go that route. Might mean you guys got to wait a couple of weeks, both to see how this plays out, but. I do want to afford that option. Let's see where this goes, get that measured and let's see what we got. Okay, Jim?
Who do you want to measure?
Who's supposed to measure it? Coating guy?
Inspection.
Yeah, building inspection. I think that's. I thought you had a gold plated one.
Pretty good, right?
No, I'm just saying, whoever's supposed to legally go out there and make this judgment call, get them out there. Let's make it happen.
Initial isn't possible.
Right, and the last one that, this is based on.
And the builder, the builder would be able to tell pretty much.
Yeah.
Nards, you know. The end of this even, oh, it's the. We have a, like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all right with you guys then? We'll do that. We'll at least try this and see where it goes, okay? All right, we'll table it then. Let's move on to the next one then, guys. Jimmy, you got ten?
Chestnut Drive, Street Improvement District number twenty seventeen dash six.
Showing twelve.
This was originally created, it was originally discussed two thousand seventeen. At that time, the proposed project was needed by protest. It's now, it's now twenty twenty two. That has changed the order from traffic to sanitary sewer, sewer and street improvement district project, also not two thousand seventeen anymore. So our request is to dissolve the district, the building that six with the intent of creating part of the next item, district number twenty twenty two dash ten. From what I understand, there was no thing or anything done with the twenty twenty, twenty seventeen dash six. It started out with the.
Yeah, this is just a kind of a procedural thing right now because we gotta, we gotta clean it up and so I am. Yeah, we need to dissolve this district and start over. So. Unless you guys got some questions or comments about it, but just some history that we gotta clean up.
Motion to a group?
Second.
Chelsea makes the motion, Jeff does the second. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. All right, let me go on to the next one, Jim.
We have said sewer storm is through the improvement district over twenty twenty two dash ten, Central Drive, Ironwood Drive, location. As part of the consist of Storm Sewer, Street improvements in Chestnut Drive area, Street Improvement, Ironwood Drive area, sanitary sewer improvements, Chestnut, Ironwood. Reason for sanitary sewer improvements are horsemen coming out of the station.
Reason for sanitary sewer improvements are horsemen coming out of the station.
Questions they have.
Right now, the plan would be to construct everything. Trees that will be launched. Right now, the plan would be to construct everything. I think one of the options, the two options for that is either shared use path on one side, other. Sidewalk on one side. Do you have a little more favor to having a shared use path? If some of the discussion wasn't.
Okay. That's like I said with the sidewalks, you know, around in that back area there, you're gonna have to knock down trees and stuff like that. That's not gonna.
Nope.
Yep. No, that's fine. That's probably not, I don't know if we have to decide that tonight. It's, it's just something that we gotta talk about though, but. Yep. Right. I mean. At least, at least a lot of people showed up and we got, they voiced their opinion on it. So we kind of knew. Cause like you said, why go do all through this exercise to have it shot down?
There was some concerns last night.
So beside the sidewalk and the street light, everything, I mean, the lift station and all that was.
It was received for now, but until we get probably the final numbers and now, cause kind of guesstimation at this point. Yep. And it's probably been long overdue. Because of the water infiltration and stuff like that that we have going on here, so.
So do you need to separate it?
No, we'll just, let's just, I think we can do these together. Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh. Direct the improvement district for twenty twenty-two dash ten, Chestnut Drive, Ironwood Drive. Lift station SA fourteen. Um, and I will also. Prove that to direct the engineer to prepare the preliminary engineering reports and detailed assessments.
Okay.
Second.
Jeff made a long motion. Chelsea does a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. All right, Jim, you got the other one here.
So a little background on rural subdivision, sanitary sewer service. Resident surveys were sent in February two thousand eighteen to the Great Straight Off, Maple Grove, Pompano, Riverdale, Chatterley, and Sleepy Hall, Sunnyside neighborhood. Forest. Survey requested input on potentially connected with the municipal sanitary sewer service if one would be extended into those areas. And I provided a summary of the responses at that time to the spend while I sent you. This was done prior to the SSL just for kind of applying exercises to the interest of some of these older rural subdivisions that were annexed into the city. Where the little seven things were adding the potential for extending some sanitary sewer out there. So. On today, none of those areas have been connected to the city. All the infrastructure has been extended, culture today, but it's just not, not into them. So. The city's infrastructure could take the additional policies, just being, meaning it could there, getting it to their, to their neighborhood. So. In the past six months or so, I've received some from residents, Sunnyside neighborhood, mostly. Just a couple from Sunnyside. Starting more information that the plan has been developed for extending. I told the residents that the city was not forcing service onto those areas at the time, is looking more or less looking for. One resident from Sunnyside, last I talked to him last week, requested that I bring it up to the city council. Discussion since he thinks the septic system and some of the neighbors are maybe getting close to the end of life. Plus he wants to do some things on his lot that if, if he does them, the drain could be. Probably impacted by it. So if he wants to put up a building, he wants to do something. He just wants to have an idea if there's a plan in the future. So. Said that it would be worthwhile, his opinion, to engage the interest again, just to kind of see if anybody's changed their mind in the last four years. I don't think that you would necessarily need to do every one of these as far as provisions I talked about. Cause if you look at. If for some reason they received in two thousand eighteen, there were a lot of, um. Other news. And at that time, on the side of the. That city council, just because wasn't the priority, the force it wasn't the front. Just more or less gaining interest. So what I would say is that we should probably. Or I guess I would recommend sending out just a little informal survey. Maybe we put a little more effort into it estimate. Forehand, there's kind of a roadblock in the northwest corner of the underbowl. Kind of a large parcel there, kind of blocking. Our right of way from our SSL. Southdale Farms class. So. Um, there have been some discussions with developers on that. Back where. Who's representative is what could happen with that? So, um. Maybe just a matter of time before that area gets planted and we can get some right of way to.
Yeah. We did, yeah, I remember that. We did that. And yeah, at least you got, we got a fairly good response, you know, on it. So it's probably time to do it again. Um, it's been four years. I didn't realize it'd been that long already, but. Some ideas might have changed and sound like you said, I know there's some more folks that are realizing that some of their septic systems are getting closer to end of life as well, so.
Yeah, and the one that I talked to said there are certain times.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've heard that before too, so.
So I guess I, like I said, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd like to do all of them, but Sunnyside for sure, just to get.
I'd say we go ahead and do the one. And if we get some positive feedback on that, maybe we look at expanding that a little bit, but I think that would be a first place to start. Comments?
Have been, and we've been talking to Riverdale about this.
They've been, yeah, we've talked with, Riverdale's been in the loop on that other project that we're doing up there, right?
Yeah. We, we had some, uh, River was a challenge. Dale. Average and some. Systems are working fine for two people, but if you were to sell them.
Problem, so.
Riverdale, more interest might come from Riverdale.
Yep. Okay. Guys, okay doing that? If somebody wants to. Sarah, you got any questions on that?
No, not at this time.
Yeah. I think I'd look for a motion from someone to, uh, accept, uh, sending out that survey to the Sunnyside group and see if there's interest. Hooking up the septic, we're gonna be working up that way anyway. That'd be the time to do it.
Yeah, we'll make that motion to send out an interest survey.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
All right, Sarah seconds. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. All right, Jim, you got the listation?
Sanitary sewer improvement district number twenty twenty-one dash four, lift station SA fourteen. This is located in Lakeview addition, as you can see from your catch minimal. Uh, located in the northeast quarter. Dice's property along. Sixth and Third Street. Project consists of a lift station, driveway around it. Sidewalk in front of it, the course made down to the SSL. This is being laid out so that in the future. My schedule is a hoop last day, advertising the Facebook.
This is for, oh, this will also serve as Lakeview, you know, correct? Okay. There's one other I haven't been able to type it out.
Okay. I think he's just pretty much going through the motions here. Yeah.
I have a question.
Let Russ here.
Number eleven has lift station SA fourteen. And this is for this station. SA eleven fourteen.
Oh, it's four. I said that. Orders in Chestnut fourteen.
Got it.
Do you want these combined or separate?
No, we'll just do these combined. See, all go together.
Sure, I'll make that motion. With the plans and specifications and then authorize the other capsize for the bids.
Okay. Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, Lucas, you got the next one here.
Yes, so, uh, Mr. Mayor represents the council. We'll have four ID agreements. For you tonight. The first one says Deer Creek second edition, but it's actual for Deer Creek. First and second conditions. That project will actually combine both of those on developments. Developer for Deer Creek State filed petition for first edition on July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Uh, and filed a petition for improvements on March fifteen. So those are included as exhibits. Uh, the city has already created. District for this one, which is Water Sewer Storm. Street Improvement District twenty twenty-one dash seven. Remembered. And it now includes both those additions, so there's some cost. Projects for this. Uh, engineers' opinion of probable project cost is six million, one hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, the cost to construct estimated at five million, eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, and that's excluding the soft costs for bonding, legal, administrative. Princes. So the letter of credit, based on the sixty-five percent threshold. Project is three million, three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Buy that to the city before it's awarded contract. Other important provisions I would say would be, uh, section twelve. Land dedication. Section for first edition, developer agreements. Developer presentation, city council agreed, uh, to an amount of. Fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. Uh, that was based on a recommendation from Parkport's tiny kitchen council. Uh, and then second edition, two hundred and six thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents. Water service provided by Cast World. Storm water will flow in Deer Creek State's edition. It'll go to lot one, block one. Which is owned and operated by the city. Storm water in Deer Creek's, uh, state second edition will go to lot two, block one, uh, again, owned by the city. Privacy fencing, this is a provision that we added into this one because this was, uh, a concern for residents in this area. Privacy fencing, this is a provision that we added to this one, because this was a concern for residents in this area. Developer work with those residents, the city had this as a condition. So at June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting, city council approved it with a privacy fence. To be constructed on the north side of the entire development. And then at your February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two meeting, you approved the plot of Deer Creek State's edition. Privacy fence on the east side of the entire development adjacent to sixty-four avenue. And then developer also agrees that Deer Creek State's edition will be senior living community. President age of fifty-five plus, because that was just at the meeting. That is kind of it for the provisions that we've changed, depending on development. All the exhibits are included with disagreement. Questions?
No, those are just stuff we gotta go through procedures.
The lift station is not part of that project, is it?
There's one existing. It'll be constructed.
Okay.
Motion to approve the ID agreement.
We have everything we need for that? Got it, sir.
Okay, Chelsea made a motion.
Second.
To approve the ID agreements, Jeff did a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Southdale Farm, Brent, you got this one.
So here is for the platform for Southdale Farms' fifth edition. We'll need to do a public hearing for that item. What you see here, it's where thirty-four lots broken up into two blocks. This one originally went to planning commission, planning commission tabled item, asked the developer to revisit the lots on the west side, so your left side, those are few. Asked the developer, consider increasing lot sizes slightly. The developer responded, they did slightly increase them by a couple feet, I believe. Look at your Chris, if I'm wrong on that, but it was by a couple feet.
Yeah, correct.
So they didn't have to bear the minimum lot size on it, I believe they went from forty, they're like forty feet wide. There is not a rezone associated with this, since it's already zoned, it's R six. And to give you a point of reference of where this is located, to the west or to the left of the screen when you're looking at this plat, the Southdale first edition. To the south. Kind of just off the very south corner of the fifth edition, you can see the elements edition again. So the very east boundary of this is where the right of way is for sixty-sixth street. And the very north right of way would be seventieth avenue south. So this is really kind of like an addition onto the first edition there. This is consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the future land use map. It did come to you, or it does come to you with the recommendation for approval from planning commission after the. So the second time, developer responded to their request for considerations, planning mission recommends approval. Need to do a public hearing for it. Like I said, rezon, or zoning is already out of there.
All right, well, we'll open up the public hearing on the plat. Do you guys have any questions on it? Sarah, you got any questions on it? I know it's a little close to your home turf there, so.
I don't right now. I just wanted to make sure that some of those requests for changes got captured that Brenton mentioned.
Yep. Okay. Any concerns with you, Russ, that haven't been voiced already?
The only thing. Chris, does your restriction about turkey cutter houses apply to this one? Guess that will be in our covenants. Yep, I just wanted on record.
Got it.
So just so everybody understands what Russ has referred to, and there's a turkey cutter houses, the developer has within their covenants, that within the elevate, that any house to be for a building permit. For review from them, there's a lot of time, most of the developments, developer has reviewed the elevations of the house, how it looks. No house can be the same for four houses. If you have four houses in a row, they all have to be different. And then they can repeat, but we'd have to do a different area for every four houses. And that's within their covenants, not within our. Abornances.
Right.
So can you fit like those three level slits on these minimum foot lots?
Well, I mean, I guess they're not, they're not all minimum with, and we're. I'm Chris Mack and I'm the representative for the development of New Red Zone. But where we made the changes were in the corner, there was concern with fire, because our frontages were a little small in that corner. But yes, I mean, we can make all those fit. The goal that we're working with on these lots, they can even make a forty foot work, but. With the larger lots, they can make, make those fit. And the one thing in our covenants, what it, which is always in there, was. We have, because we have had some discussion with builders now since we have this in place, we've always had architectural control, and so it's not approval. Now we just have a little bit more of a guideline for them to follow with our architectural control. So. As we are developing Southdale third, which is northwest of this development. And they are getting permits, we are fetching that and we are telling, we're, we are requesting them to send it to us before they go to the city for building permit.
We appreciate that.
Yep. And here if you have any.
Thank you.
One other point I do want to make, Chris correctly or wrong, but all these lots have been already spoken to. Yeah, I think so. Our actually, I'm sure I'm global, they're already spoken for, so on this planet, in the area, we'll do so.
Okay, anybody else got any other questions or comments, concerns? Okay. Think with that, then I'll close the public hearing and. What do you guys want to do?
I don't know what name is yours though.
Yeah, I don't think there's, I think it's a good layout, so I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the plat.
So moved.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and the motion passes. Okay, let's go on to sixteen. Who wants it first? Lucas, pick it up. There you go.
So the fourth edition and the fifth edition are going to be tied to lots. So I think that B and C.
Do you want sixteen and seventeen together, is what you're saying?
No, I want to say in B and C.
Oh, B and C, okay, I got you.
This is all.
Yep.
We're all putting them together.
Got it. Go ahead, we'll do it separately. Take the ID. So do, to do the ID separate, we'll do.
For the two editions.
I know, that's fine. Let's keep it separate, let's go.
Okay, so Southdale Farms' fourth edition, petition for improvements dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. The city created water sewer storm, the street improvement district twenty twenty-six on September sixth, twenty twenty-one. Engineers opinion of probable project cost is thirteen million, six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The cost to construct minus the soft cost is eleven million, three hundred thousand. Therefore, the letter of credit is on a sixty-five percent threshold, the amount of seven million, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Land dedication was previously done. Southdale, Southdale addition, so that's the credit was eight point one. Planning commission recommended a. Reduction of three point nine five to get that total to four point one four acres. So eight point one acres of land dedication credit to four point one four. And in addition, as part of the construction. Pocket park will be located on lot three, block one, Southdale Farms' first edition. Cost associated with this site work will be reimbursed to the city by the Horace Park District. You're aware. People who did this project. Water service will be provided by Cast World. Wastewater will go to the San three sewer lift station, force made on lot one, block two, Southdale Farms' first edition. And it'll go to Deer Creek, the park will treat that. Storm sewer. Will flow to a proposed pension pond, and then the flow to the Shining River to the west or drain twenty-seven to the east. City engineer is preparing a stormwater report, which will evaluate the difference alternatives available for the stormwater outlet, including the need for lift station. The preferred alternative will be selected to provide the most technical design, given the physical site constraints. That's it.
All right. Any questions on that ID agreement? Sarah, do you have any questions on that ID agreement?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the ID agreement as is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Jeff makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the motion carries. Okay, we'll combine the next two B and Cs, so who wants to take that one, Jim?
So the client, construction plan is a specification for the. What I'm asking of you tonight is just to. City parko review, as part of Lucas, as late as the stormwater report, lot one, one, seven, the Shining River. And that drain twenty-seven was a personal alternative. Supposed to have an answer last Friday from the city parko regarding the storm. So basically what happens is on the north side of sixty-fourth avenue, we're going to come into the drain, there's the city of Fargo and Horace boundary. And it's immediately adjacent to the, like, Joe Hess property in that area. Order. And. No, planted and dedicated the appropriate amount of value based on the city of Horace land use, which is seventy-five feet from the center of the road. To get into Fargo, for a road that's classified like that, it's a hundred feet. There's some, this little bit of a question as to how much was necessary in there. And our response back that we haven't got a reply, that she was, we can only ask for the first seventy-five, that's the most that the city of Horace's ordinance is allowed. So I think there was a little just back in, there's this little sliver. Land on the west side of the, of the drain twenty-seven that we need to get their blessing before we leave there. So I want to keep things moving, I want to keep it, but I want their blessing first, just in case they even. I blocked out that I come back and say something didn't happen. But I don't want, I think we'll have something. This week is just a matter of, I don't want to have to wait. Think that, and put us behind, a little bit behind. That's where we're, we're sitting at that.
Okay. Questions again? Always have a look to, for a motion to accept both B and C together.
Were you talking about fourth and fifth edition?
Yeah.
So, but the.
So both B and C and B and C for both.
We can do it the other.
We'll keep them separate.
Keep them separate, so.
But it is one.
It is going to be business one after section one, which is a fourth edition, section two, which is the fifth edition.
Gotcha.
Since that we have separate, because if they have an outcome of the division. Then it still took action on.
I will make a motion to approve. B and C, plans and specs, and advertise for bits.
Okay, so Chelsea makes a motion. Yep, contingent upon parko review, yep. All right, so Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
All right, second. For Sarah to chime in, nope, nope, Sarah.
It's all right.
We'll handle this meeting, Sarah.
Yeah, Chelsea made a motion, Jeff did a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just letting you guys know, my internet's a little in and out, so. I, I didn't hear all of what Jim said about Joe Hess's land, which is why I can't in good faith second that. Jim, can I ask you to repeat the seventy-five feet versus one hundred feet boundary? And you said you expected an answer this week? I, I need clarification on what answer you're looking for there.
So, so what I said was that on the east side of Joe Hess's property is the city of Morris, city of Fargo boundary. And when the Hess edition was planted, there were seventy-five feet of dedicated right of way on sixty-fourth avenue, which is required by Horace code.
Yep.
Code.
Yep.
Right on the other side of that is Fargo, as Fargo is requiring a hundred feet of right of way, based on their land use ordinance. So.
On their side, correct?
What's that?
On their side, correct?
Yep, but we have to cross their side to get the drain twenty-seven, so there's a little sliver. And between drain twenty-seventh and Horace, that we have to cross through. And that's what we're waiting for the blessing on is within that area. It's not very far, but it is nonetheless in their, in their area.
So we're just making this motion contingent on that information.
Correct, yeah, we won't go forward until we get the blessing done, because I'm not, you know, recommending anything in that area until we have their approval.
Good. Okay, that, that answers that. Forgive the delay here, the internet cutout. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay, we'll move on to seventeen then. ID agreement, any different?
Well, just the front numbers.
Sure.
It's smaller. There are different. Probable project cost, one million, eight hundred and five thousand dollars. Cost to construct minus the soft cost, one fifty. Letter of credit, one seven thousand. Special provision for this one. Land dedication for this development was built during plating and solid build on addition. Pocket park. Park services cap. Centres were, so station force made more constructive.
Any questions on that, guys? Sarah, did you catch all that?
I did, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, then I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the ID agreement as is.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Oh, Jeff, can I beat you this time? I'll second.
You got him. All right. Chelsea made a motion, Sarah did a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, all right. Jimmy, you got the next one for you too? Same thing, same song and dance. Okay, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, who wants to take the next one to start? Lucas, you got the ID agreement, I'm guessing, so start there.
Okay, so this one is phase two of Maple Lake State's addition, addition for improvements for this one was. Eated October nineteen, twenty twenty-one, city created water sewer storm constraints improvement district twenty twenty-two, that's five. City created water sewer storm constraints improvement district twenty twenty-two, that's five. Engineer's opinion of probable project cost is three million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Cost to construct minus the soft cost, two million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Letter of credit must be amount of one million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the developer previously contributed forty thousand for Maple Lake State's addition.
A long time ago, long. No, that's right.
He did.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
There was also a lawsuit tied with that property, well, multiple
Amongst other things, yeah.
Uh, council, or state council, Maple Lake's one's plan that dishonored the layer, or the
Dedication, yeah.
That's why you see it lower.
Water for this one is again is Casperl. Waste water will go to listation number nine, in the base of the city's wastewater treatment lagoons. Uh, storm sewer will go to existing storm water detention, to existing storm water detention ponds on Lot One, Block One and Lot One, Block Two, Maple Lake State's addition, uh, which is charged to Caspian Highway. That's it for the revised provisions.
Okay.
Do we have a test app, Jim? Stormwater left?
Mm-hmm. Maybe after this week. All right. Any other questions on the ID agreement, guys, otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we'll combine B and C on this one too.
So the project consists of the construction of water sewer of the streets on Concord Drive and Seventy-third Street South between one hundred and second Avenue South and one hundred and fourth Avenue South. Uh, the project is phased at the request of the developer to be Concord Drive this summer. Um, the sewer and sewer services are already in, have been through a freeze thaw cycle, so all adding is water, storm sewer, and then paving that. And then as said, the part of this project, next year Seventy-third Street will get paved, but the utility services will be this year as part of two law that will feel freeze thaw. This area will also be well-milled. Hundred and fourth Avenue will be paved from Concord Drive um, to Burgundy Drive, which is the furthest east most. Uh, there will be a radius and curb footing to block the traffic off of the gravel. Hundred and fourth will not be paved between seventy-second Burgundy Drive through to the um, we're talking about it currently paved, there was a concern that it would be assuming the seven seconds paved, paved or being paved roads, so with that gravel gap between Burgundy and seven seconds, people won't necessarily take that thinking that it's all paved. There's also a gate as part of it. Project, the developer was heading to the project. Construction traffic off. Our schedule on this one would be uh, or bids at the first day with the provision made of in the barn. The relatively smaller
Yep.
After report position.
Okay, that's even better. Okay, any questions? I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
There you go. Sarah made the motion, I'm gonna get a second.
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We want to, what do you think, Jim, we still wanna do that one, or you wanna?
So I remember seventeen is a pressure monitoring system for fire hydrants. Last year, the Horace water meter, water, water replacement project, there was a pressure spike at one or two locations, where the system over in the north itself of that area town was having a spike. One of the reasons we're doing that project is so that no one's underground. Not knowing that, somehow thirty-one valve got the pressure to spike to a point where it was a little bit of damage up to some holes. So, um, at the North Shore Water Expo, Adam and I were talking to the ref for American Flow, and they talked about a pressure monitoring system for fire hydrants. And I think it's a good way of monitoring that system throughout the rest of the replacement. We got some concern with Park Drive right now, so Park Drive is where the water leaves the treatment building. And to be perfectly honest, we all know where those on Park Drive. So having these pressure sensors in place, allowing us to get a gauge of where they're at, and I think they have audible, you get notified, right, when they get over a certain there, there, so they're cell-based, they last for five years, depending on how many times you have them set to read. I can have notify me once a day, ten times a day, and then change the parameters of high pressure, low pressure, anything in between, we'll send all that data, so. So at one point, I think what it would be eighty pounds, typically a fifty pound system, when the pressure was going up, so we did reach out to the state water commission, the state water commission didn't consider these to be eligible for cost share. They're considering them agents item and not a, um, not something that they cover. We did also reach out to the drinking water, uh, drinking water state revolving loan fund, and they would be eligible from the DWSRF side, just go along for you, a certain type of cost share with them. So, um, Adam had solicited votes from from three manufacturer, or three suppliers. We got ESG, the book supply group, Corning Maine, and Ferguson. The sensors, from what I gathered, are all the same. From all of the suppliers. Um, they're all coming, they're all coming from the same source, the only difference in price is that market. So it looks like ESG had a four to twenty-four thousand, seven oh four made sense, Corning Maine was twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, seven cents. Ferguson was twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, I think we should, I think if this is something that seems almost a good one to do and desire, I think we should just prove it, it tends to follow further review. My friends that are committing leading, they weren't, um, didn't have them right away, so I haven't seen if there's anything in detail, so to speak. And, um, other reason why we wanted to bring them to you tonight is they have a four to six week lead back month, and despite a lot of other stuff, so we relayed too much.
Yeah. Paul.
We need to get so, maybe they have with that.
Which one of these was quicker turnaround, or were they all pretty much four to six? Good.
Like I said, they're all coming from the same
Yeah, that's, well, that's how I figured, but I'd ask.
So, one of the things that we have to do with USRF, the USRF is get three quotes. What this whole source probably have to justify this whole source equipment, so we have our here. So basically, unless, the equipment request would be eligible for USRF participation, however, it's not considered a small purchase, it's considered less than three dollars value. So they'll need at least three quotes, or sole source, for the equipment. Um, the accurate of the sole source, we won't need that because we've done things, but, um, give some reasons why in the past, the state isn't accepted for sole source, sole source equipment. But so they look like if you want to see you don't have any other questions about them?
I do, I'm sorry, um, I didn't hear the explanation for what the cause of the spike in the pressure was from Jim, Jim, can you repeat that?
So the best that we can tell is there was a valve closed at the corner of Mickey Mouse and Cheyenne Drive, and there was another valve closed at Willow Court, which for some reason caused when the pumps turned on, the pump house, a spike in pressure. We don't know exactly why or how why it did it, but it just did it. So, um, at that point, public works put a, um, a diffuser, were you diffusing or were you bleeding out pressure on Liberty? So on, on one side where they had the valve closed, so basically from Mickey Mouse wall, and then over on the east side of town, that stuff all saw no change, because it'd been met from the tower. The only thing that saw a change was everything in the southwest corner. The pump kept calling, or the water tower kept calling for water, it just couldn't get there. So it pumps until something gives away. So then in that instance, then we would just put in some pressure relief valves, and then we can adjust those off of fire hydrants to try and maintain a continuous pressure just by blowing water up into the ditch, basically.
Okay, so this pressure monitoring system, are these an, an external thing that's mounted actually on fire hydrant? Or is this something that's mounted, uh, in the pipe or something like that down below? I guess I'm not familiar with this, per se.
They basically replaced one of the caps on the fire hydrant, and then included in the, in the bid is locking caps. So you put the cap on, you put the locking caps on, and then you open the fire hydrant. So it has to be open, that's why we put the locking caps on, and that's part of the extra expense, well, those caps are pretty expensive. We don't want somebody to just go start pulling a cap off, thinking they're gonna hook up the water and blow off the caps, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of one of my questions, because I know that frequently contractors, uh, come to the city and request meters so that they can have access to water. And I'm a little concerned about how that may fluctuate on the monitoring for the system. I also wanna know, is this a wifi-enabled or a Bluetooth-enabled? How do you get the signal on each fire hydrant, Adam?
It's a, it's a cell-based system.
Okay.
Whether you want to email you, text you, um, and then on the, uh, they're called captivator caps, as far as locking the hydrant out so nobody can use it. Um, I think, I can't remember what the bids are, almost more, including three wrenches. So in order to get that wrench from American Flow for them to send it to you, they have to have basically our security number. So I'm the only one that can order. Nobody else, even the fire department can't order them, they're all individually keyed, you know, like for your car. So then we would also provide one to the fire department to use.
That was my next question, how do we get access to the fire department for something like this in the event of an emergency? So.
Yeah, pretty much just give them one of the, one of the multiple wrenches that we'll have. And it's something that we can add more of those wrenches to in the future. You know, I say along, maybe if we do, we have continued problems with people pulling water when they're not supposed to. Then we're already kind of in, in systems, we can start adding, adding those captivator caps as we so.
So are the, uh, my understanding, and, and correct me if I'm misunderstanding here, those wrenches are individually keyed for each one of the fire hydrants, is that correct? Or is it master universal wrench?
It's, uh, the way, the way it was described to me, it was they were like all of ours, everyone that built for us would be keyed for us.
So
They'd all be the same, but they're all keyed just for Horus.
Good, that's what I need to know, because I don't want there to be delays in response time if the fire department doesn't have the right key for a specific hydrant. It, it, they all need to fit all the hydrants, okay, thank you, that's what I need to know.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, otherwise, Adam, what do you, what would you like us to do here? We'll do a contingent upon further review, but do you wanna just pick one, or Jim, or do we wanna just?
I was just, uh, I would say just approve it, uh, say twenty-six thousand. That way discrepancy whichever one.
All right, so look for
I'm sorry, um, I heard three different quotes from three different vendors. One was twenty-four thousand and change, and the other two were twenty-five thousand and change. Were there different lead times? I, I, was my understanding that they were all coming from the same, uh, vendor? Not, not necessarily the same manufacturer, but three different vendors, yes?
Yeah, the lead times were the same, but they didn't have a chance to dive into the bid.
So we got the quotes, Sarah, at, uh, six, I got them at six twenty-six PM, so I just wanna make sure to run through them and see if there's anything in the details that's missed, so.
Well, we don't need to wait two more weeks for this, this is pretty much a no-brainer.
We don't want to
No, just We put, we, we just make a, a motion that we'll go up to twenty-six K with this, just in case there's something comes up with shipping, I don't want any monkey with that, so you guys pick the one that's gonna work. We'll go from there.
Close response. Almost that we see as a response.
Okay.
Then the plan would be
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I'm gonna look for a motion to proceed here.
Motion to approve the monitor, monitoring system?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, for twenty-six thousand.
Not, not to exceed twenty-six, okay? All right, Chelsea makes the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Rupertdale Water Testing, Breton.
Uh, just touch base on briefly, and then Adam could expand on any any questions we may have related to this. Uh, this is the neighborhood that we brought to the council's attention here. Oh, I probably could say about six months ago, in regards to wire testing, see how the council felt about should be continue doing the wire testing on this, is for the Riverdale subdivision, is testing their well water. Uh, they have well, they have a well there. Um, and for some reason, we still don't know exactly why the city was taking charge of, took charge of doing the compliance testing for the state, for the subdivision to the state. The service area is outside of our service area. It is actually Casperl, if there's a public entity that supplies any water outside of the well, water. Um, if they have any issues or anything, then we're open to having to resolve that. Uh, in addition, we are currently responsible for doing their CCR, Consumer Confidence Report. Every year, we work with Real Water to do that. However, we are responsible, and we do all, like I said, we do all the testing for that. Uh, that is a charge, there are some expenses tied to that testing. Also, like copper testing, that is a concern to us, because it is getting to be more and more difficult to get volunteers, especially in that subdivision, for those testing. Uh, actually, I was at a meeting here last week, they were talking about like copper testing is really difficult here in the next year or two. So we do have some concerns about that, too. Um, in interactions with the state, Adam has been talking with the state, what they indicate to us is that if we wanna drop off from being the responsible party for the testing of this, uh, we just need to provide them proof from that council to decide, yes, stop doing that testing. Uh, I understand it would be
But you're asking
Fix it up, then.
It would be the individuals responsible for that you be having in H O A, so it's
Yeah, their H O A.
There are this isn't the only one. Um, one of them they were kind of in the same boat, and they actually, it's the water, they actually hired as Fargo's in certified their system. And that is a possibility that they can hire outside person to do that. Yes, role would look at but, uh, for Sleepy Hall, for example, the city was not involved with that. And also, they tested their well and took their first test with water. That was about two years ago. I was two years ago. On the morning, yeah, twice. So they, they did do that. Maybe it's two years ago, but and all the state was pretty much asking for a contact for whoever would be in charge, or in this case, the person, whoever's the president of the H O A. They were talking to them. Depending on, depending on the year. Depending on, depending on the year, I do actually want to figure costs. Um, I would guess it's anywhere between a thousand to twenty. Here's what it costs us. The other, the other problem is, is we don't, we don't have any authority in the system. So if they start failing tests for some reason, I ha- I have no recourse to be able to make them. That, that can start to look on. It's supposed to be separate, their system and ours, how it's recorded and everything. But it, it's still kind of together. Looks poorly.
So, okay, so we talked. Are they okay doing this?
We haven't heard anything from them. Uh, you've been working. Now, the only, depending on who you talk to, like you said, we do have problems. We have three sample sites right now. And two of the sample sites want to be removed. Then we have to find the resident. Certified sample sites. And then it really starts to be.
So, so if we're having a hard time finding a resident that's willing to do this, where are options?
Have no enforcement. We have no means. I don't really have, I don't still have any good options. And so like, we're, we don't have as many good options as like say Fargo does. So Fargo doesn't have any sample sites that are at residential house. They're all churches, gas stations, businesses, whatever. There's always access to get to. Ours are pretty much all residential, other than like on our system, we have one Casey's and one at the city. But it makes it really difficult, especially depending on some of the some of the tests lately have been coming out with very short notice. Uh, I'll receive sample packages on Thursday, and then Monday morning I'm supposed to be sampling. I don't know where that's coming from, but it's kind of starting to become a little bit more of the norm where it used to be, I'd have a month or two. And we get sample sites set up and ready to go. Both of, both of the parties that were, one of them used to take care of the system, two sampling sites, one of your both of those parties would rather see our system dissolve than get hooked up to the casserole.
I was just gonna ask that, I mean, is that an option? Hooked up to casserole?
Yep, it's a man that goes right by.
Is it a huge cost?
I I don't know if ca- I don't know if casserole would be willing to just hook up, you know, basically decommission their well and hook up to it. Or if they would want to run a new system.
I'm almost wondering, do we need to get their H O A board in and talk this one through?
We can meet with that or.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we throw, throw the message out there, I'll see if we can get them to come out and talk it out. I'd rather they kind of get on board or not on board, just so we know where this is gonna land, what we're gonna do, so.
One of the, one of the things that we've always questioned and never been able to find, and maybe the H O A has the answer. My friend said, we don't know how we got roped into doing this years ago, it's been done since at least fifteen years. We don't, we don't have a signed contract with them that we know of.
Let's do that, let's get a hold of their H O A, see if we can get that, have that conversation, so that we, these could talk about this a little bit more. Let's try and get the whole board in. They have to have a board for their H O A, so. All right, let's do that, let's bring them in and, and have that talk. See what we can do about that, because I'd want, I want their support, or if they're not gonna be supportive, we've got to come up with plan B. Okay? All right, so let's, you guys have any objections to that?
No.
Okay. Sound good to you, Sarah?
Absolutely, communication is key. I completely agree with communicating with them i- at first to make sure that everybody's on the same.
Yep, perfect, all right, so let's go on to twenty-one here. Population growth study. You think we got some growth going on?
I apologize if uh this heads up for anybody if we, we lost some camera feed here. Uh, compared to that, and we've been having hearing issues, so I have been heard more than times just so everybody knows. So then I follow up with Steve and I've done base in uh the I T company. Uh, what you see here before you is in regards to population growth study. This is more detailed than what MetroCog is currently doing. MetroCog, uh, they are doing a population study for the metro. That is the first band is five-year increment, then it's ten-year increments after that. Uh, what this would be is taking data from MetroCog study, uh, school district, they did a study on student enrollment um, uh, recently, so it'd be asking for finding, copy of findings from them. And we have A two S. Go through that, they would also look at building permit trends, depth, data. Um, to really get a more refined, more detailed population growth study or analysis for horse. What this, our intentions are is really to look at what the anticipator projected growth would be for horse in one to two-year increments, not five and ten. Uh, this would then go hand in hand to help with buy inventory and just spot out how they're understanding what is, what are we taking on?
Uh huh.
Uh, what is the metro experiencing, but like I said, this is really geared to just horse. Uh, that's what our overall goal is. Um, I did reach out to some other consulting companies also to see what they can do. I spoke with Baker Tilly and that with them for about an hour, about a month ago. And there received a proposal back from them. I did ask around some other firms just to see who would be willing to do this or could do this. Uh, and then I spoke with A two S also, and A two S has worked with the city before. Uh, they have worked with us with financial side of things, and also uh, looked at projections before during the past. So we do have a good relationship with them, this proposal. Uh, overall costs they have is for, I believe, just over sixteen thousand. And what they would have is a tech- technical memorandum and the data bind. But they're looking at, so their projections.
What is the?
Their overall goal is to have it completed by end of June.
What is the need for the study?
The need is to give us a more in-depth look at our growth on a one to two-year analysis versus the five to ten-year bracket that MetroCog is doing. Uh, also MetroCog study and going through the process. Uh, they actually showed us in the last, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six, when we were going through our working groups. Our working group discussions on their study, they're showing us growing by only thirteen hundred people. It grew by nearly a thousand people in one year last year. Uh, where they have, say, cast, for example, growing by sixteen hundred people. And we had some concerns about accuracy, how the accuracy of it. Because the model that MetroCog was looking at is total growth for the whole region. Not as much isolated to a specific area. This would get to just boys are girl. That's an intention out there. Uh, we'd be hoping to have, uh, if this was to be approved, and they just hit for running. And then they will have preliminary data to just the future and then the refining.
It's gonna help us be able to start forecasting some events. What are we gonna be dealing with here and when? Yeah, Stephen?
To back up what Cory's doing and Brenton here is I need that information also for grant applications. And when I look at the Census Bureau, and I look at, okay, this is how many more houses, this is whatever is, it doesn't match. When you're going into federal grants, you have to use established numbers. So I can't just say, okay, I've got this many more homes, two point two people per home. Just by why we're trying to go after federal dollars.
Um, to expand a little bit to what Steve mentioned, we do have similar interests. Uh, this does help us provide a better picture for when we're dealing with bonding. We're able to give background of what we're going through, what Harold is going through. Uh, the other thing is this would be current data. Being that they have this, put this report done by end of June. This would give us current data or fairly recent data to where we can use that when we're going into the next legislative session. Believe it or not, that's not too far away.
Coming around.
Next legislative session in January. Uh, we want to make sure we have our information where we can all explain to legislators, this is what we're going through in horse. So, uh, overall, they mentioned sixteen thousand two hundred. Uh, the one I would ask is not to exceed a couple thousand, so that way we can gather the costs there. They say approximately thousand for if there's costs associated with travel. I don't expect there to be a whole lot of co- a whole lot of costs because the individual is based on grant borders, but rather be safe than sorry to come back over. Unless you'd like me to.
Yes.
So would the results be official enough for federal grant application? This study?
What they would do is they would be able to identify key points, like when we're talking census-wise, where then we can ask the state monitor's office to give us an official estimate. And we know all those key points, we would be able to do that. And when we're applying for grant applications, we would call out saying we have a study done to show our, that's our population, so I don't think it would hurt us one bit.
It helps justify some of the numbers that we're talking about.
The, the challenge that we had too is that uh census cut off. The twenty twenty census, they cut off in April twenty twenty, right when we started to grow. So, or really started to grow, that's when everything started taking off and the census doesn't show really.
We don't have any accurate representation where we currently are at all. Steve, you got another one?
To back up the question, so if you, oh, for example, the school studies are one of the end game studies. Then that gives that, that credibility, it's not you doing some lag of. Just reference where those studies demonstrate them. And they're accepted practices.
Yeah, I think the diversion situation would be key in, in our growth patterns. Because once that is done, I think it'll change, you know, the spread of the population.
Yep.
Definitely, I mean, not something that I feel like we would need just for our own personal reasons, but I s- I definitely see where we can use it as a tool, so. Yeah, I would be in favor.
Yep. No, I think this is something we should probably be looking at doing, so we can start justifying some numbers, especially we can start working with the legislators in the next cycle here, we can start showing why we're asking for this cost sharing, because this is where we're going with the numbers.
Yeah, and I think you guys, with the water project, you know, there was a lot of good work done on getting funding and, and so um, definitely using those avenues is important, and I think you guys have done a good job looking into that, so.
Okay. Sarah, you got any questions on this one?
No, I'm also in favor of it, I think that it's going to provide us a really good basis to take some of our work with legislators, uh, grant money and additional funding further, so I am in favor of this, yes.
Okay. All right, so we want to make a motion, proceed here, not to exceed eighteen K?
I'd make a motion to uh approve the population growth study, not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I suppose, I'll roll call this one, Sarah?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
All right, um, Brenton, you got the next one here? So let me, I'll preface this a little bit. Part of where this came from, um, I did one-on-ones with the staff uh, to talk about, you know, some of the things that are going on. What do they see, what's some of their concerns they've got? Every one of them mentioned this, so we're gonna get on with this. This has been a contend, a point of contention with the staff, and it doesn't need to be. So this is part of what, uh, we're growing as a city, we're starting to deal with more things. Our staff is getting more busy, actually probably busier than ever. And we need to start spreading some of these things around a little bit, this is part of that, so. Go ahead, Brenton, I'll let you finish it.
So the main ways of this, it's receptionist, obviously, is to be available, be a front desk person, answer the phones. Overall, overarching responsibilities of them and provide support will stay hall. Um, we do have a drastic increase and, and I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers of calls, but sadly apologize for putting you on the spot there, they probably attest to the increase of calls that we've had. Uh, every year we've had calls, our calls keep increasing, increasing, increasing. Uh, the approach that we have had at City Hall over the years has been to basically almost like a divide and conquer. We have a couple people that have been responsible to be the primary ones answering the phone, and then two other, one or two other staff members be the backups. Uh, that is starting to become an overall issue just because of the volume of calls that we have. So our goal of this position would be somebody is the main point of contact, main person answering the phone. That way work is not interrupted with other staff. Trying to tackle their projects and whatnot. Um, but also this will lead to the main person, so when you walk into City Hall, they're the person that greets you. Um, overall, our goal would be if this was approved, to fill it fairly quickly. Obviously, we have to post it and review candidates and everything, but we'd like, we'd really like to have somebody in this role, not to this in future. As for paying for position, we have two project, or two positions that have not been filled yet. Uh, we're going through, you brought their initial, your few processes for project manager and for um, the administrative assistant for building inspections, those two positions have been budgeted for the entire calendar year. But obviously, I mean, that they haven't even been filled yet. Uh, that frees up funds here to be able to tackle this position. Questions?
But so Wendy is gonna sit somewhere else?
What we would do is, uh, council has approved the, the job description. Need skill for utility building specialist, and we do is do a drill posting, see if staff members have any interest in applying for that utility billing. If they do, we fill that from there. And if the individual that does, or the general administrative, and like Wendy, she does utility building and everything. Um, yeah, but then the option either go for this or, or even be into this one, or they serve for utility building.
Just thinking about how many desks we have, you know? Like I'm assuming you're moving those.
Yeah, we're.
You're moving the file cabinet.
Yes.
Yeah.
In the file cabinet area.
Yep. Well, we went over there and took a look.
And there's one other desk in the inspections, or is there just one more than?
One, there'd be there'd be one empty desk. Uh, and then for this position, yeah, I'm there to report to executive assistant, where I was looking at for that is in regards to um, overall support, like support services, trying to group staff into respective areas based on what their job types are. And the logic that we had there, and I did consult a core on this one was uh basically executive assistant and receptionist are really support services for City Hall. Really my position and for council. Um, that was where the logic was on that. Uh, if there are concerns on that, uh, I'd just report to myself. If I ever consult, if I'd like, why are we?
Questions, concerns?
Um, if I had to choose, I would have to report directly to Brenton.
I don't have a problem with that, which, and that's, that's a keeping thing that we can work on, yeah, let's just go ahead and have it, have them report to you. Otherwise, anything else on this, yes?
Sounds good.
Sarah, questions, concerns?
No, I went, uh, down to the temporary location myself and saw the. Amount of interruption, uh, that was going on, just trying to have some simple conversations, and. It was disruptive, I can't imagine being a resident, going down there and needing to spend any amount of time and trying to get anything accomplished with the. Amount that the phone was actually ringing, so I, I'm not in disagreement with this.
Yep. Okay. I'm gonna look for somebody to make a motion to accept this new position.
So moved.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second them.
Okay, Sarah does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. You got the next one too, Brent.
Hey, the next one here, um, is regarding to the job description for senior building inspector. We currently have three building inspectors, all their, each of their job tasks is building inspections. The main difference between building inspector position, senior building inspection is the requirement of. Experience, come up from five years to seven years, either in trade or through education or combination thereof. Uh, it does identify instead of a, requiring an associate's degree or experience within that. We require a bachelor's degree in either construction management or appropriate experience. And then, the other difference between this and the building inspector is that this position would be. Super, basically supervising building inspections department, uh, really trying to start establish. Some structure thereof, where there's a B building inspector, so senior one, they supervise the other two building inspectors. And also, building inspections admin assistant, so they would be responsible for supervising those two positions there. But we find that, we have, we're finding that this would be helpful, especially with our building inspection staff, where if they run across an initial conflict. The initial level of resolving that conflict. Be done by having a senior building inspector, and I think it's escalated, it could escalate to. So, or council or mayor, so. That is the logic behind that, uh, what we do for this is similar to the utility building specialist position. We do internal posting to see if any of our three building inspectors would have interest in this role. Uh, opportunity to apply for that and be considered. And if not, um, didn't have interest on that, then. Most likely, just keep the three building inspectors at the, you know, just the mission specifications of three building inspectors, and then. Perhaps roll into that later date. But at least I agree to have this approved job description, so we're able to.
Gotcha.
Anybody else questions, concerns?
So it's not a new position, it's just. Opportunity to fill.
Any questions, Sarah?
I, I guess I'm not understanding, you said this is not a new position. But are we trying to fill this position, or what are we doing here, I guess I, I'm not understanding the, the basis here.
We would like to. Fill this position internally, if possible.
Internally?
Internally, if possible, because we're not asking to create a new position.
Do we have anyone internally that's qualified for this?
Yes.
I believe we actually have more than one. So.
How does that work, do the people that are, if somebody wants to apply for this, I mean. If you're looking to fill it internally, but you have a job description, don't you legally have to accept outside applications too?
You could do it internal posting.
So you're trying to get someone, I, I guess, I, I need to have a little better understanding, you're trying to get someone to take a lead role? Over the three inspectors that we have currently? Or it would, one over two, I guess?
Yes, basically, it's trying to create a lead role of our current building inspections staff. Not creating a new position.
I didn't have a chance to review this job description, because it wasn't posted over the weekend when I looked at it. Um, I'm not sure if that's just a, an internet issue or what, but I saw that it got posted like four hours ago. I would like a little more time to take a look at this and, and have a little more discussion, um, but I guess I'll. Leave that open to the others, I'm curious what Jeff and Chelsea think.
I think it makes sense, um, I guess I haven't read through the whole, uh, all the details of it, but, um. In general, I mean.
Right, the gist, the gist of the thing has come down to that we need, um, as opposed to Brenton. Working one-on-one with those guys, that one of them, we'd like them to step up into the supervisory role, be able to handle working with that group. And then report to Brenton. Basically, going, going that way, as opposed to him having to, have to interface with all three of them separately right now. So, it's more of a, the growing pains thing, we're trying to. Kind of keep this, a call of senior staff level, and this is one of them that we would like to try and fill as well. This kind of came up as we were going through, like I said, the one-on-ones that I was working with the, with the different people on. This is something that had gotten brought up as well, that we should start looking at having. Uh, senior staff in charge of different divisions, and this was one of the. Uh, areas that we needed to start doing that with, so that's kind of where this precipitated from. Yes.
So if you want to fill this in generally, you have staff to pick from, more than one apply for it. There's probably going to be some staff.
I'm sorry, I can't hear any of those comments.
Just basically stands a concern that if two or, two of them applied for the same position, one got it, the other one didn't, that would probably. Precipitate some more con, or conflict in the office. So.
Can you see an issue with that?
From my experiences, what I've seen, I have, I, I know what you're talking about, I have seen that.
I don't know.
On occasion, um. I'm working with our three building inspectors, I don't perceive that we have an issue like that, but I've also seen. Other places I've been. Where they've done internal postings and stuff as well. I, I see it work both ways, I think it depends on the staff, if they have. How they work, how they work with each other already.
Yeah, I think if we didn't have confidence in our staff, we probably wouldn't shake goodness' rote, to be honest.
Uh, or we got, in order, we'd be looking at. Create a sense of new.
Yeah, like a new position outside.
We're trying not to create another position, that's sort of. For building inspections at this time.
At this time, yeah. Do you got a question?
Uh, I concur with this, um. The twenty twenty-one international fire code is adding a lot more compliance areas on the commercial side. That I'm having to deal with, and one of them is. All the rebar work that has to be inspected and certified before the concrete gets parred or brand name that is on a commercial basis. I don't deal with residential, think I don't. So, just that part alone and some of the other parts, and the way the city is going to be growing commercially. Having somebody to interface with the other person.
Yeah, it's that one.
Very useful. And the sad thing is, is that somebody calls you up and say, oh, the truck's on its way and you need to be here in half an hour.
Mm-hmm. This is just part of the growing things that we're going through right now, this is just one of those things that we need to take care of, there'll be more, but this is. One of them that kind of came up a little bit more in conversation, so. Sarah, any other questions on that one, I know, I know where you landed there, but. That's, makes some sense that we were talking about there.
It does make sense, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'm prepared to make a decision on this right now, um. Not having had any time to really think on it, I guess I, being remote, uh, not having any. You know, previous time to really review the job description, um, I would have to be relying on. Others judgment on this, and I, I have some concerns.
Yeah.
Underground here a couple of weeks.
Is that all right, ma'am, I don't mind either. Yeah, that's fine. Why don't we go ahead and do that, Sarah, why don't you take some time, digest that, we can ask some more questions back and forth, and then we'll bring it back. Here in a couple of weeks, and we can talk about it some more, okay?
I appreciate that, I, I did hear Steve's comments, and they are noted. I understand that there may be a need here, and I just want to dive into it a little deeper and make sure that we're encompassing everything with it, that we're looking to. I, I don't want to do anything hastily here, I want to make sure that we're a hundred percent inclusive.
Okay, no, that's fine, so we'll do that, then we'll bring it back up, couple of weeks, everybody do your homework and ask questions on this one, and. Can bring it back here next week, or next, in a couple of weeks, so.
Appreciate that.
Yep, so let's move on to twenty-three and a half here, Lucas, you got some information back from the AG's office today on that, uh, query of ours, so why don't you go ahead?
So after your second meeting in January, uh, we had discussed reaching out to the attorney general's office to. Ask for some guidance from that office regarding the interpretation of. North Dakota Century Code forty dash thirteen dash oh one, which says a person is not eligible. Elective municipal office unless that person. Has been a resident of the municipality for at least nine months preceding the election. So I had, uh, a call with the attorney general's office at the end of January to, uh, discuss the research that I had done. Uh, into this issue, asked them for guidance. So they. Asked me to prepare a memo of our research, so I provided that memo to you all this afternoon. Uh, again, they didn't respond until late this afternoon, so that's why you, you just got that later on today. Basically, what, uh, the attorney general's office did, was based on the research that I provided them, was they pointed the decision back to the city council. Uh, to make a determination on a question of the qualifications of. City council, uh, should be decided by the. North Dakota, um, that had discussed. Does a residence, residency. Qualified from the previous jurisdiction into the annexing city's jurisdiction? Majority says that yes, it does in fact come towards the annexing, uh, entities residency requirement. There was a case that said that it, it doesn't count and it shouldn't count. Again. Ultimately, North Dakota has not decided it, that's why we reached out to them, and then there's also. Attorney general's opinion, uh, in actually Century Code, that says that questions of qualifications of. City council should be decided by the city council, so that is the. The Century Code provision that the attorney general's office ended up, uh, relying on, and so I provided you with. The response from the attorney that, uh, holds the political subdivisions portfolio. Uh, and her response that I got today was, as you are aware, there are no attorney general's opinions or Supreme Court precedent directly on point with this issue in North Dakota. Your research memorandum appears well reasoned and well researched. And you have formulated your interpretation and answer, and ultimately, this decision is one to be made by your client. You'll just have to advise your client to the findings, and then the client will need to determine if it agrees with your interpretation and apply it accordingly. So based on that, I then get to point it to you guys.
Appreciate that.
To make, to make that decision, so. So what's, what, ultimately what ends up happening is the city council needs to decide. Does the residency. From the previous jurisdiction, so residency of. The township, is what I went before, then apply to the city, uh, once the city then annexes that. Meaning that if a person had lived in the township for nine months. And been annexed into the city, then they would beat that, that threshold. That nine-month threshold, because you're applying that residency to the city.
So, right, yeah, I think it's been over the last, I don't know, sixteen years that there's been that. I think it's been a perennial bill that they've tried to get through the state, you know, that extraterritorial. Voters could vote in a, in a city election, and they turn that down flat almost every year. When I was out in Bismarck last week. Director's meeting, and I took their. Attorney aside and had this conversation with them as well, or with her, with Steph, and, uh, she was saying too, you know, that. To her, this would set bad precedence by doing something like this, because you're changing things in the middle of a cycle. There's, uh, North Dakota Century Code forty dash thirteen dash zero one, that specifically says it's nine months residency. She advised against it, uh, to other people that I had talked to, that I hold in good standing to know. On political issues, said the same thing, this would be bad precedence, so. I'm very concerned that if we go start down this path, where does this end? I strongly recommend we not do it, but I will listen to some of you guys' stances on this, but. Go ahead, you go ahead.
I'd like to say, um. The opinion was, so, I mean, with all due respect, the people that you spoke with, that's fine, but the opinion.
That's right.
There's no bad precedent between that here. It's simply acknowledging that people that have been annexed and.
Which I can appreciate you get, too, did you?
Such the entire body of case law, which Lucas referenced too. Is to be inclusive for people to run for office in associations and in governments that they're being taxed into, so. I would absolutely say. That we should be able to. Grab our residency from where we live and we were annexed into the city, which we out of public either that we were doing, I think we're carrying that in our back pocket. I, I really strongly urge you to think that. I, I don't, I don't think that. Other individuals, I think that it's in your hands, and the AG. Not setting that.
So, do you have a? Opinion? Or whatever you want to call it. Directive?
Yep.
I've seen so much crap done in this country in the last couple. Years. Don't be part of changing. Changing how things are done, just.
What have you changed, what are we changing?
We're changing a statute.
Is it changing though, are we writing then something, or is it just an opinion that we move forward with?
Will say it's not asking you to change any order. Challenging you to make an interpretation. Based upon. Case law from other jurisdictions, I mean, it, it's literally challenging you to be a court, I mean, make. Make the decision based on the, the case law that is before you, the statutes that are before you, and decide on the qualifications of your lot.
And it's the only way to do it, right?
And it's. It's, this is solely on nine months. And it's, it's not changing the number, it's saying, does the residency from. Previous apply to the city? And so, something that this body should be aware of, I guess, as far as are you setting any precedence is. What then will other cities in North Dakota do? If you decide one way or the other? And I don't know what that is, I. I don't know what cities are annexing or whether they'll look at what Horace has done, but again. The AG's office is, is saying that this is a question of qualifications, there's. Century Code provision that says that these questions are up to this body to decide, and whether that's Horace, Fargo. I know, anybody would have to decide themselves to make a decide differently.
Jeff? Jeff?
Um, my opinion still is the same as it was a couple of months ago. I. Understand that somebody that has lived here. Fifteen or twenty years and has recently been annexed. Should be afforded that ability to run for office. It was not their. Doing that caused it to be less than nine months. Um, of time of residency. So I personally have no problem with it. I know I was in the minority of our council that day.
Okay, Chelsea?
Well, I think, um, you know, the way Lucas describes it. It really doesn't state clearly that it should be a no, they shouldn't run. So I mean. In that, in that case, I have to agree with. You know, with allowing it.
Yeah, Sarah?
Boy, I tell you, I, uh, I know this individual, and I worked with the annexation. Um, a lot of those people were here before I was, and I have no doubts about, uh. Their qualifications in this case. I do have concerns about setting a precedent, and and this is something I guess I. I need to do some thinking on because I I can honestly say that in this particular case. It probably makes sense, but what if a city in North Dakota annexes an area? And those folks don't have the type of history that our folks do, the luxury that we have to gain insight. Knowledge from our folks. It creates something that could turn really ugly. And I'm concerned about that, um, for the same reasons that I was concerned about the precedent that. The situation earlier this evening would set. Um, nothing different, nothing personal. Um. I think those residents are extremely valuable to our community, and I think that there are. Reasons why we could consider this and reasons why we shouldn't consider it. Um, I question if I can actually partake in a vote in this, uh, due to a conflict of interest because it is my intention to run. For my seat again this year. Um, and so for that reason, I don't know if I can have an opinion, and I might need an opinion on that.
Lucas?
Well, so first I will say, maybe I wasn't quite clear with setting precedent because. You don't set precedent on other cities. Your decision is not binding on other cities. Um, it would just be their decision. And they could base it on your decision. So I'll say, start with that. Um, as far as the conflict. Uh, usually the conflict has to deal with, uh, direct financial or pecuniary interest. Um, and so this one isn't a financial. On decision, you know, what what you're deciding tonight. Usually it's for like contract type situations where you're potentially benefiting financially from a decision.
Okay.
So your morals, you know, we don't really, we're not going to question them.
Yeah, so what do you guys want to do? Yeah, you gotta make a make a motion. What are you gonna do?
I will make a motion, uh, to allow the annexed residents to run. And as long as they've been a resident for nine months. We're not changing anything. It's just my opinion, I guess.
Okay. All right, Chelsea made a motion. Can I get a second?
In their home.
No, do you want to just? Name the area or are we going to be general with this?
She just said as long as they've been a resident for nine months, that's what the work, that's what the.
Within. Of the annex area.
Jurisdiction of the annexed area.
Yes.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay. Yep.
Trying to throw in there, does that include their ability to vote? Or is it automatically because they've got annexed?
So the ability to vote is our thirty days.
Yeah, that's a quicker determination.
Hold on, say that again, Lucas. I want to hear that clearly.
The ability to vote is only thirty days.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't be able, that wouldn't be enough time to even run the thirty day or, I don't know. The timeline. I mean, obviously, if you can't vote, you can't run either, but the thirty days is, you know, by closing of when signatures are due.
Thirty days before the election.
Yeah.
All right, so Chelsea's made a motion. Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay, Jeff seconded it. I'm gonna roll call this one so everybody's on the books with it. Sarah?
Thinking. Come back to me.
All right, Jeff?
Yes.
All right, Chelsea?
Yeah.
All right, Sarah, back in your court.
I like Stephanie, but I'm not deviating from Century Code. No.
Okay. Well, the eyes have it, so, all right, good to go, Stephanie. All right, so let's move on to number twenty-four. Jim?
Tate Benedict Avenue, um, the Nike team is on Tate Benedict Avenue. We have three stuff cases. We have, um. Players involved, their access, their drive, their water, their sewer. Um, we're finding out they're learning things about that from just the bunch of we are. Although we talked to them over a week ago and we talked about last Friday that they don't even own the property. They just started operating early.
Really?
There's an attorney that's in charge of that one, so the feeling of them. Um, but lines are coming along. I was kicking my heel here. Um, as far as construction, ramping up, dinner meetings out on the water. I envision we'll be seeing some. Um, church is passed bids Friday. Uh, next time.
Okay.
That's what I have for it tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Brent, what you got?
Sirens are fixed.
Yeah, good.
We're working on the right times again. So they were out here the other, again, it's my understanding, so they adjusted. Um, tax segregation meeting is next, State Council meeting, eighteen. You'll have that right before the council meeting. They'll start at five thirty. Letters went out by the county last week. Uh, the tax segregation meeting is opportunity for residents, property owners to, um. Basically appeal their assess their assessment value, how much their property appraises that. Or appraise that, assess that based on the county. It's not about property taxes. That's where a lot of people, uh. misunderstand they government, they want to pay more property taxes or try to protest that. The discussion's not about that. It's about. So, uh, if property owners have a significant increase in their property value. Uh, they should have received a letter from Cass County by now. Uh, they, it is posted on the county's website. They're going to JAS. See the twenty twenty two proposed amounts. Um. There, if residents have any issues or concerns related to that, assess them out. They'd reach out to Paul Pocassi or the Census Office at Cass County, and they'd be more than happy to sit down with any property owners, discuss it. Uh, what they'll do next, the next council meeting or right before the next council meeting would be. Uh, anybody that is appealing their assessed valuation, make the list. We'll talk with them in the back of the room. If it is a deeper conversation, they'll ask to meet with them one on one. So that is historically what the county has done. Uh, like I said, we'll, so council will be meeting at five thirty on the eighteenth for that. If we want the council to follow, um, that meeting. So that way we're separating the two items, so it's not convoluted and embedded within our regular city council. Um. But like I said, I wanted to stress this, not about property taxes at this time. It's a question of what the county views property value of that. And that is based on being within, uh, within ninety, I think they shoot for ninety-five percent, but Century Code, I believe, requires them to be within ninety percent. Of the city. But then what the market is going for. Um. Remodel update. They're almost done. They're doing final touch ups to it right now. Uh. We have Christiansen's in today, starting to install the furniture that we already have available. So they started doing some of that install. Uh, the rest of the furniture for, uh, remodel area and for working spaces. Uh, my understanding would be installed next Monday. Um, we're looking at having, uh, staff move back, start moving back in next week. Uh, one thing I would ask for council's consideration is if council be open to city offices being closed one day next week. For a smoother transition back into the office, because otherwise if we're gonna folks. Stay here or there, answering phones or trying to interact with. Say, yeah, council does approve us to do that. If if you'd like to, I don't know if we need a motion.
I don't think so. Just find the date. Every day you guys are gonna move, just get it posted up there so people know what's what's coming and.
So it'll be called on the thirteenth, and except we should, our overall goal is to. Be out of the park, Miller Park Building next week. So. And all the parties should be happy so they could start.
All you guys back there will be happy.
Everybody would be happy. That is what I.
Jeff, okay. Portfolio reports. Uh, I was out at the League of the Cities last Monday. We had our board meeting on Monday afternoon. Um, I kind of talked about some general things, kind of getting, started talking about what we're doing, being forth for some, uh. State laws and things like that, kind of going into that a little bit now. Um, probably gonna be focusing a little bit more on that at our next meeting, but just kind of some general pops. General cleanups. We got the new guy Matt on board now, so he's, uh, kind of going through and straightening some things out from the past, so, which is good. Uh, probably needed to be done. Um, see, the other thing I had on here was, uh, I did a presentation on Tuesday afternoon at the League of Cities. Got that squared away. Um, we're gonna be meeting with some of our representatives from District Twenty-Seven again, hopefully this week. Um, are we, Sally, do you know, are we still on for the hundred and fiftieth on Thursday night at seven o'clock? I know that's gonna interfere with the deal over here at the Senior Center, so, um. We should throw an email out there and see how many people are actually gonna make it. If we have to postpone this one, we might have to do that. Let's get an email out, because I'd rather people go to this gig over here, because it's gonna be pretty cool. Yeah. Yeah, so, all right, uh, that's what I've got. Sarah, what do you got? Can you hear me on the phone?
I can hear you. I don't have much for an update. Um, I will have more when I get back to town.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Naomi's not here. Chelsea, what you got? Okay, Jeff, what you got?
Um, I was promised all the other friends and members that I would, uh, bring up, that, uh, construction garbage. Um, floating in the breeze, uh, with the wind the last few weeks, um. Just a reminder to some of the construction companies around town, please pick up your garbage so it doesn't end up in residency yards, because I know they complain. Um, we've been asked to get stuff out of trees, so, um, other than that, that is all. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right, been a motion to adjourn. Jeff did. Chelsea made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds good. All right, Sarah, we will catch you later.
Have a good night.
Yep, bye.